Twenty-four. It is the select board meeting for the town of Wayne. All members are present and we're going to start with the pledge allegiance. The flag is behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have a we have a fairly busy agenda tonight and in the order of organization and time, just before we get going, uh, we're going to bring up the new business discussion with Consolidated Communications before the public hearing for the special amusement permit.
We have Simon Thorn from Consolidated here with us who can answer, who can talk about the proposal and answer questions.
So we'll get to that, but we're going to take care of our, uh, the warrants to begin with. Conflicts of interest coming up? Seeing none, okay. Uh, meeting minutes.
Uh, will we accept the minutes in the April sixteenth meeting?
Any discussion on the minutes? Alright, all in favor? Warrants.
Motion to approve the power table warrant number fifty in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
I think primarily in this was the, the plowing contracts. It was the biggest thing.
All in favor?
I'm into approved cable warrant number fifty-one in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Second.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Uh, we need the board to approve the town cable warrant number fifty-two in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
And leave the board to approve the town cable warrant number fifty-three in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Discussion.
This is primarily the school's charge to, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? So, uh, at this point, we're going to welcome.
One more.
Okay, one more.
They move, uh, cable warrant number fifty-four in the amount of ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Oh, I see, yeah, second. Uh, discussions. All favor. Okay.
So we'll talk about the internet.
Yeah, we're going to open up our, our business, uh, welcoming Consolidated, Consolidated Communications and, uh, Brian, uh, the internet consultant.
Brian here with us too?
He's on Zoom. So Brian's on Zoom and I'll, I'll pass this.
Yeah, let's hear it from Simon first. Simon, I, I presented the consolidated proposal, but you can, but I think it'd be better if you would present it from scratch too. And make sure I got it right and then we'll have, see if we have questions. And the reactions from Brian, is that okay?
Uh, yeah.
Don't need a fancy pop-up proposal, a fancy, uh, presentation just.
Okay, just the facts.
That's the fact, yeah.
Okay, um, hi, my name is Simon Thorn. I work with Consolidated Communications. I've been in conversations with Stan and Brian Lippold about bringing, yes, sorry, not at all, uh, about bringing, uh, fiber optics, uh, to the town of Wayne. Um, we successfully were awarded an RFP for Fayette. Part of that response will include a build out of kind of the northern border of Wayne. And so what we're talking about is filling in the blank. Um, I've got numbers and figures, but I, I just, I'm not going to get into that unless there are specific questions. I'm happy to give that to Stan, uh, to convey. Um, but where the proposal that we're talking about is the town, um, giving five hundred thousand dollars to Consolidated, Consolidated funding the remainder and building up to every home.
So I would just want to clarify that when Simon says filling in the blank, the proposal we looked at earlier would have filled in the areas not covered by spectrum cable. Filling in the blank means having a fiber network on every road in town.
That's right.
Accessible to everyone in town, which is a major upgrade, A, to the internet service would have, B, would give eighty percent of the town competing services. And so that's a decision for the town meeting to make. We certainly didn't feel it was our decision to make one way or the other. Um, but that's, that's where we are. Um, uh, it's a fairly straightforward proposal. We know what fiber internet service is, which is to say extremely fast and reliable. Um, I wonder what questions people have. We've been talking about it. So you said five hundred thousand. Originally you were saying you thought it would be five hundred fifty.
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct, Stan. Thank you.
Yeah.
So it would be five hundred and fifty thousand. So I, I think that if the differentiator between ourselves and cable TV is our service is purely on fiber. We don't use any coax or copper. Uh, today we have speeds that are two gig symmetrical. Everything that we offer is symmetrical. And the network is being built to handle ten gig symmetrical service to your home. Most people will say, that's ludicrous. You don't need that kind of speed, but anybody who's starting to delve into telemedicine will tell you that we will need that speed and it's in the future that we will need it. So once we see a demand for increased speeds, we will increase the speed of the network. I think it's important to note that we don't have contracts with our service. There's no installation fee. You can cancel at any times. We offer discounts for, um, you know, no, no bill, right? Electronic fund removal. So we offer discounts. You can bring your own device to the network. Um, installation is free. So as long as we have a path from the road to your home, there's no charge. So if you're five sections down a pole line, that we, we won't charge for that. Where the charge would come in, and this, this always gets a little, uh, technical and every scenario is a little bit different. But if you're underground, if your, you know, your power and all of your services come in the underground and there's no path for us, it, then there could be a charge, could be meaning we will do five hundred feet free. We have a product where we drag in a, a microfiber and a conduit and we do that for free. If it's beyond five hundred feet, then we require the customer to place the entire thing. There's a background story to why we do that, but that's, that's what we do today um, for many different reasons.
I think when you talk, we talked about it, you were saying that that means if a person has five hundred feet of underground service past the road.
Right.
In other words, that, I mean, it's a very, this is a very small number of people.
Right, to the home. So typically this affects folks who are off the grid. Typically, we, we see that.
Yeah, but if there's a pole, then you yeah.
Yeah, if there's, well, there's, there's no charge, right? It, it doesn't matter. As long as we can get access to that pole, we will place it. There's no charge.
Well.
Oh. Well, go ahead.
Yeah.
I've got several questions, but the first one would be you're a profit company. Why are you charging five fifty?
So the total bill is, is one point three, one point four million dollars. It's not something that we would typically try to do.
Other towns, so I understand you build out, if you don't charge it, that's right.
That's right, yeah. But there's a formula that goes into that. Right? There's a formula that goes into that and that differentiates whether it makes business sense to do or it doesn't. It's, it's expensive to build the network.
Oh, I, you're still, you're still, yeah. So can I continue?
Please do.
This build out every private road as well as public road, is that true?
Yeah.
Is that stack that five fifty?
No.
If, if, if you only built out public roads, what would that number be?
Um.
Now that, you may not be able to answer.
Yeah, I can't really answer that question, but I think.
Would it, would it be significant?
Yeah. No, it would not. I don't think it would because I don't think there's a lot of private runs. They could tell me I'm wrong.
It was at time.
But I think, I think one of the requests I heard was it must be townwide.
I understand that. I have, as, as these fellows know, I have a real upper on all the property tax. So I'm trying to figure out why that number five fifty and how that would be affected if you didn't build out every private road.
So that, the number is where the model makes sense for us internally. Okay, so that's where the number comes from. If we wanted to shave roads off that, it's a conversation to be had, but I can't, you know, I just, I can't stand here and tell you.
Off the number, but I mean, if, if it, I'm assuming that the real expensive part of building this out is those far reaching things. You know, there, there's a very expensive build out of the return you're going to get.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I'm just wondering, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at this, these, these things.
Yeah, I, it's a valid question. I don't want you to think I don't think it's a valid question, but I, I can't answer that without looking at it and having that being called out.
So to the board.
Yeah.
I would say, as I have said before, I would hope you would find a way to do this without impacting the property tax. We've got a huge uh, budgetary pressure on the property tax now, and I think you will all agree it's going to increase dramatically. We had you know, blessings come in strange ways. You know, we did that thing over two years ago and and, uh, one point eight million and we all, with all our liabilities, it was with this in hand, just a months later, that looks like a terrible deal we were sold. This looks way better. I just don't like the property tax on it. I think the users should pay for it. Is there another way to pick up that money you need by surcharges for a while or something? Is there another way to pick that up so we aren't impacting property tax? For this, because there are people, quite frankly, in properties that are going to be paying for this, they're not going to do this. Let's subsidize it to people who are using.
Yeah. I think it's a conversation we could have. I you know, I, I don't want to answer on the board.
I know, but it's a circular thing.
Ford, I think that that would be up to us as a town.
That's what.
I think that's up to us as a town. Partially, is it not? Or, or would that be a negotiation for them? Am I wrong?
What would be?
How, how, how would we end up paying for it?
Right, but other, 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 other ways and maybe we look at.
This is my question for user. Um, you're in Fayette right now?
We will build the rest, the remainder of Fayette by the end of this year.
And is that through the BEED program?
No, that is through an RFP that the Maine Connectivity Authority produced because Reed Fayette, I'm sorry, was, was going to be built by another promoter and they kind of backed out of it. The Maine Connectivity Authority did a one-time RFP to see if they could court high speeds to come in and build.
Fayette got the grant away.
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering if, is, is Fayette paying as well?
No, Fayette's not.
So Fayette's getting this upgrade without Fayette.
Fayette has such a low percentage of people with service that like some of the, like other towns around us, like Bianna.
Right.
They got the grant that we couldn't.
Right.
And they got more grant than we couldn't so that it paid for their network. We're, we're at eighty percent, which makes their business case worse and makes us less likely, makes us not get those grants. That was what happened.
Will those grants be coming? I mean, look, look what's changed since we did that alone. But things are changing fast. What do you see coming down the road if we wait a couple weeks? What's, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
And then let's hear from some other people.
I, I think that there is the potential for a grant, but it's certainly not townwide. I think that if I were to look at the map, um, if I had a look at kind of what I would consider Southern Wayne, um, there's a campground down there, right? I but I think that area in general has the best chance of getting grant money to be built. It's very, it's very small. Anywhere that has spectrum is not grantable, right? It won't receive any kind of funding through the BEED allocation to build out any kind of a network. So I it's, it's still an unknown because it's a process that's, it's evolving, you know, it's, it's evolving. So right now there's a challenge process. Everybody's involved with that. Then there'll be a state math process where we'll actually be able to see what they consider to be fundable and non-fundable, and then the process moves from there.
So this is the Google card.
Uh, Mike.
I have a question and a comment. Question to you is, do you have any studies, video, consolidation? Do you have any studies for towns in which you laid out fiber anywhere and what that benefit to the town has meant to property values? Second, my comment is if we're going to start to look at taxpayers paying only those services that they use, are you opening a can of worms because there are a lot of people that pay a significant amount of taxes in this town that don't use the school systems? They don't use the entire of the roads, which we all may. So, you know.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we see about a five percent increase in property value. When, and when we hear from realtors in communities that we go into, one of the first things that gets asked is what's your internet like? I mean, in, in today's world, COVID being what it was, you can work in it anywhere from many different fields. So that's, that's typical.
So somebody who might have a house for sale that's getting three megabytes per second versus somebody at five hundred, one gigabyte, you know, the value of sale might be higher.
It's, it's averages to probably, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I was late. I don't, I didn't hear if there is any town money, any ARPA money, any funds left um, to contribute to this.
Bryce, Bryce, you have that?
Yeah, uh, uh, so I have our ARPA funds left. I have fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five and twenty-seven cents. Again, I I would be a hundred percent comfortable once that's an audited figure. So let's take that as an estimate. And then the broadband franchise fees, uh, which I'm probably seventy percent comfortable with is forty-one thousand. But again, I take it with a grain of salt till I see it audited.
Okay, so we have in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars that can be committed to this. And the other thing is we've been looking at what would happen if we borrowed the money over time, and that would mean the first payment on that loan would not be in this coming fiscal year. So that gets it out of this. It doesn't mean that it go, it doesn't mean it's not money. It is money. But it doesn't apply to this next year's budget.
Hold it.
Um, so I just, um, that's really important to know, but I also want people to know that there is money coming down the line and it is, if you have, what, I said. Um, I agree with everything you said and I have, I share your concerns towards, uh, property taxes.
Ollie, would you speak a little louder?
I share your concerns. I share everybody's concerns about property taxes and I want people to know that there is money coming down the road. There's two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars coming into the main for broadband infrastructure. No. Everybody who has, he's right. Everybody who has kids will not get that ugly. But our area of towns that are not covered are supposed to be covered. Those are the first areas that are supposed to be funded with this money. So, uh, there are other options coming down the road. As you say, it's very flexible. Things change. I know that the project area is going to be coming out very soon from Maine Connectivity Authority. I would hate for us to spend as a town this money, um, knowing that there's a lot of general money coming into being that can be used for this. Yeah, I'm on spectrum. I'll stay on spectrum. If I really like the idea of fiber, um, very excited about that. We'd love to have a choice. I think that's probably why it's coming in, um, to provide because when there's a choice, and I'm just wondering, um, you know, you are going to have crops in Fayette and this is where you're building. I don't know where else around here. I don't, you know, leaves is, leaves is almost all set up, you know? Backs and, and fiber. So Wayne is not going, is going to be without it. So it's really enticing on one hand for us to go for it, but on the other, you might want to wait for the federal funds to fund this. And that's, um, well, I went to that tonight. I live right down the corner and I also do this work. Um, so that's what I want to make sure. And I just wonder what Simon would take rate is, uh, back when you had one.
Uh.
Which means how many people would, um, sign up?
Yeah. So that's a good question. Um, I wouldn't, wouldn't really be able to answer that to the degree that I would say we're very impressive. Meaning we offer promotions, right? We, we send door knockers. Sometimes in certain markets, we actually have people go around the doors. If I can just comment on something that you said, um, I think the difference here is that, that money isn't going to build the entire town.
Yeah.
Right? So you're, you're talking about spectrum and the network that they have or, uh, what we would consider to be a future-proof network. Right? So there is a difference. I agree that the funds that it's two hundred and seventy-two million and those funds are required to go to the locations that have service below twenty-five over three first. They already know there's not enough money to go everywhere, right? Since in the entire state, not like there's money going to be left over. So, you know, it, it, I agree. It's, it's enticing, right? On one side and it's not on the other. I'm, I'm not here to persuade you, right? I'm not here to persuade you. I'm just here to present what we would be willing to do and it can, you know, leave it to the town to decide, but it, it's, it's apples and oranges, right? And I, I'm not going to speak poorly about spectrum, but the service that they offer is not comparable to what we offer, what in speeds we offer and speeds we will offer. The, the other thing, if I could though, we, we had talked briefly and Stan forgive me, but we had talked about not coming up with this all in one calendar year. Right? When we build the network, we would send an invoice to the town for fifty percent once we started building. And then when we complete the network build out, we would ask for the remaining fifty percent. And we could co-inside that build schedule so that it was, you know, half in one year and half in the other year, right? The town my financial calendar year, so.
It's my, it's my sense though, that if we borrow the money over five years, that's not that relevant because.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah. Let's hear from some other people and then I, I want to hear from my internet consultant too.
What's the rush right now? It seems like this came up all of a sudden and you want on the warrant for the town meetings. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, you know, my fifty-seven years in this town, I recognize that there's not a lot of people generally show up to town meeting versus the number that come out to vote in the fall. So it seems like somebody is pushing this forward for very few people to be part of the decision versus having in the fall, particularly on the election year we're going to have this year, where you get a much larger turnout. What's the reason for driving this right now when it sounds like we don't even have all the questions answered?
Well, we've talked about both.
What's that?
We talked about doing it both ways. We're just, we're just trying to figure out the right, the right way to do this. It's not like anybody's pushing.
Yeah, there has been discussion about, you know.
The impression I got from reading was that you were trying to get it for the spring. That's the impression.
Yeah, I think, well, I think we, we've had, we've had, and I, I mean, Stan can speak, speak better to this, but I know on the board, I mean, there's been at least one plan or internet build out option prior that the board didn't vote to put towards, you know, on the, at the town meeting or a town meeting. However, this, this particular option was more reflective of the previous, the previous town vote. So there was a, a consensus at the board that it, it modeled what, uh, voters had initially asked for and voted for in favor of. So the, the, the decision at the board level, uh, is I think Stan mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, uh, was to to have you decide, to have you to, we want the legislating body to vote for this. So whether, I, I mean, I think, I think at our last meeting, but, but our last meeting, there was, you know, there was a, a action to put it on the June meeting, but I don't uh, I, I believe there's still room to have that discussion that you raised about where the best fit is for a certain plan, whether it's November or June, because we definitely did talk about that.
Well, I think your responsibility to the taxpayers would say the fall, you have a lot more people showing up versus a small number of people that come to town meeting.
No, I agree. I mean, and I think, I think there's inherent attendance scenarios that come up at town meeting and I know that's, you know, that's a, that's a different discussion for tonight, but yeah, I mean, it's definitely a discussion.
Numbers as to how many generally show up at the town meeting versus the number that usually vote in fall.
I think, I think generally at a presidential election, don't, this isn't an exact number. I think generally what, five fifty, six hundred? Is that reasonable?
Versus the forty or fifty that show up at town meeting. That's a huge difference.
There'll, there'll be, there'll be more like eight hundred, nine hundred and ninety voters in town and most of them will come out.
Question for the town meeting when you've got such a small number of people and you say it's similar to, to, to plans in the past, okay, but our taxes go up every year. People change their mind when it starts costing more and they can't afford food. This is a big deal. And, and the last thing I'd like to say is if we're going to do something like this where we're paying to have fiber to every home, if I chose to live a half mile in the woods, will the town pay to have CMP delivered to my house? Because it's the same situation. I may be a minority that I'm not getting uh, uh, for the folk who aren't getting spectrum right now and they want internet, I mean, internet, I understand that. But if I wanted to build farther away, that's my decision, just like their decision to live where they want to live. Will the town pay for installing power and cable to my home if I decide to build a half mile off the road? Because that's essentially what you're doing here by spending taxpayers' dollar to get fiber to every single home in town. Same thing.
I don't think we discussed, are, are you talking about that five hundred feet specifically?
No, just the, the five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Right, I'm talking about going to every home. Then if we're going to start aiming for folks to get fiber to their homes, do we start paying for them to get power when we go?
Yeah, I understand your point.
We, we were, we had discussed pretty deeply in regard to November versus June for the very reason that we, that's very.
Uh, I saw, I think Hazel, yeah.
So a couple of things. Two meetings ago, the board voted to put it, to put out to the citizens their interest in pursuing a, a internet project um, and voted on it and agreed to do it in November when for all the reasons stated, you have more people that are going to vote. Last meeting you voted and I haven't really had the answer on why does a hurry up get it on the town meeting vote? So I think you need to consider that input instead of pushing something through with a much smaller percentage. But my question for Simon, and thank you for standing there so patiently, is how did you come up with the five fifty? You know, what's your payback period? What's your return on investment? Where did that magic number come from? And by your own admission, you won Fayette on an RFP. So while you pondered that, you know, like that magic secret formula, I'd ask why don't we put this out to RFP? Because the only way you're, unless they're willing to negotiate down, um, why don't we put this out for an RFP and have a competitive bid?
So there is a cost per passing model, right? I'm not going to share that number with you because, you know, that um, and so that five fifty gets it to that cost per passing model. Right? And so I, I guess to the question a few questions before, we, we, we want to see a forty percent take rate. Right? But it, it's not forty percent day one. It can take up to five years to get to that point. So so it's a, it's a process.
So are you willing to negotiate that price down?
Um, we would, we would have that conversation. But I'm not sure that it doesn't stop hard at that. Right? We can talk about it. I mean, there's some other things that were brought up about, you know, maybe not doing all the roads, you know, there's, so maybe there's more of a compensation here than, than.
I, I have, I have one follow. It's kind of a, a, a tag on that. It's in whether, whether you can answer this tonight, but, uh, one, one thought would be, would there be a cost? I guess it depends on the scale, the scope, what, what's discussed, uh, but let's just pull up a, a hypothetical where Consolidated would bring fiber to, let's just say the public roads at no cost to the town and then BEED would then come along in two or three years and bring the fiber later. Uh, it's just a thought process to, 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 I'm hearing concerns about property tax impacts. I'm just, but I'm also hearing, uh, obviously the, the interest for fiber in the town based on the previous vote. And I'm just floating that out there. I feel like you need to answer that.
I, I don't know that. So BEED, BEED is not a, you know, a lengthy process. It, it should be wrapped up by twenty-five. Um, so it's not like it will lag behind. Now the bill will lag behind because there's a process to go through to be awarded and signed contract and so forth. Um, you know, I don't know what is a town road versus a private road in this area. So it's, it's really almost impossible for me to answer.
Yeah, no, I I didn't expect that. It's it's just a concept.
I guess I want to jump in, not as a select board member. I'm playing the ability to do that. I could come out from behind the table, but I think I'll just stay here. So I'm gonna be off the board soon anyway. I don't get this private road thing. People on the private roads pay taxes. Some of them pay a great deal of taxes. Some of our seasonal people, uh, as my understanding is, our seasonal folks, many of whom live on private roads, pay more than half of the town's taxes. I don't see, I I'd like to understand why it makes a difference. That's what I'd like to understand.
I just want to clarify, my example of saying a private road, I should have said the the folks that are both, that are, uh, don't have access to internet at this point, which there are examples of public roads in this town.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So I want to clarify that.
If if I can just respond
Yeah.
to that, right? The way we would build the network is we would bring a fiber into a cabinet. And that cabinet would then feed halls, right? It's it's like a, like a prism, if you will. Well, you you have to get the fiber to the cabinet. Right? So there's that cost. And then you've got to get to some halls. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I I I just caution you that I don't know that you'd see massive decrease in costs, right? Because you have to get certain parts of the infrastructure they, okay, so I just.
I I want to make sure I'm keeping track of hands. I think Mike, you you had a hand up and I want to make sure I recognize. Okay, I I'm I'm trying to, I'll do my best. I apologize.
I want to make sure we hear from Brian too.
Yeah. Uh, we'll take some hands and make make sure, Brian, I saw.
The cabinet thing, is that, there are some installations around towns that are pointing, so do you have one? Is that the cabinet? I don't, I don't know.
No, no, it's different.
What is that thing?
Those, we we would call that a slick system. So basically, Diatone comes in and we do the same as as we do with fiber. We just multiply it. Those sites require power, whereas these cabinets will not require power. So if you lose, you know, if the town loses power, a central offices have a generator that got massive batteries. That's why if you pick up your telephone service, you still have Diatone. So that generator will kick on. Those cabinets require no power. If you can power, you know, an outlet at your home, you don't lose your network.
Henry? I didn't hear that question.
Spectrum customer, will you save me any money?
Oh, okay.
I I think the sh- the short answer is yes.
And not counting an introductory rate.
Yeah, so so I'll just give you a, I'll give you a, right? So you could go onto sodiumfiber.com, you can see all of the pricing and everything that they offer, okay? But the average homeowner only needs a hundred by one hundred. That's more than adequate. Okay, so it's twenty-five dollars a month for the first year, it's forty-five after that. We don't provide TV, but we partner with um YouTube TV, uh, direct audition networks. There's, there's a bunch of them are on the website. So they offer the TV, their pricing and plans are there. So I hate, I I hate to say this, but I think the answer to your question is yes, it's a question of how much money would you save? Right? Depending on what you were to choose.
Mike.
So, this discussion having this vote in June at the town meeting versus November, the general election. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the the June meeting will then give you the authority to move forward. Would the vote in November allow you to do that as well? Or that then put it off until the following town meeting next June? And then to the point about holding out a little portion of the town. If some of the town gets increasingly higher speeds available, does that make you less likely to get grants in the future? Where you can't get them now based on what we?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Service you have and you improve a portion of the town, but not all of the town. It's gonna put those who don't get it now, you know, further down that list of getting more money.
I'm thinking this is a good time to hear from Brian Lippold, who's been our guide through a lot of this process. And I think knows knows as much about these things as anyone I know. Brian, are you there?
I I am, thank you. I'm I'm hearing all great questions. I think that to drill this down, the offer on the table from CCI today is five hundred and fifty thousand. If you wait, and let's say you wait a year. That number is going to change. It may go down, it may go up, but odds are it's going to change. In another year or three years, there may be different grant programs available that you might be able to take advantage of, or there may not. The belief in the industry is that this BEAT program is going to be the last big tranche of government funding. And it's not enough funding to cover everywhere in the state of Maine that needs it. Ultimately, I believe that everyone will ultimately get a fiber-based service. We don't know how long that's going to take. That might be, if you don't do anything and you wait, it might be ten years. All, but eventually, everyone will have fiber-based service because the phone companies will retire that copper infrastructure eventually. So I think what you're really talking about here is the, uh, is how quickly you can get a fiber-based service. And that's what the value of that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is. So whether you do it at the June meeting or at the November election, I'm not sure that makes a huge difference. But it's really about the urgency, if you have that urgency that you want to pursue. Um, some towns decide, you know what, we're not gonna do anything, we'll just wait. Um, other towns look at it and say, we want all of our constituents to have the same level of service for a whole host of economic development reasons and so forth. That's really, it it it's up to the town. What, but what CCI is putting on the table and and also the five hundred and fifty thousand, how do they arrive at that? It's largely a factor of density. How many homes per mile are there? And every town is different when you compare them. Um, if you're in downtown Portland, there's sufficient density that there's no subsidy required there. They have multiple options. But in your town, you don't have the density. Um, and CCI is putting a number on the table to solve that density problem. Um, so I'll stop there and, uh, Stan, was there anything else that you wanted me to cover?
Well, there might be other questions from other people. I just wanted to, thinking back off something you said, Bryce, it's my understanding that what would happen if if there was a November vote, would turn out to be the same as if there were a June vote, because we wouldn't be obligating any funds for twenty-four, twenty-five, either way. Either way, what would happen is money would be borrowed and funds would be obligated for twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond. So, uh, I think it works out the same way. The downside of not doing a town meeting, we had a hundred forty people, which is still not nine hundred. When we talked about the internet before, that the downside of not doing a town meeting is the inability to have a conversation, which I think is is a useful thing, but certainly the numbers are dramatically different this year. But if we do it in November, the funds would be available then. And if we do it, it it, but they still, because we'd be obligating money in the next year, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
So it wouldn't affect next year's taxes either way, which means we have a choice, correct?
Correct. Hazel.
Yeah, so if you want to have a conversation, I think public hearing is a way to do that. I do have a question for Simon though. So, um, based on what Brian just said, the price is gonna go up. You don't know whether it'll go up or go down. How long is your five hundred and fifty bit proposal good for?
Typically, it doesn't change quickly. I think with, within six months, you know, yeah, that would probably change. Unless, unless we knew the path we were going down, right? Typically, we see a large change within a year, because equipment changes, right? Fiber costs change. Labor changes.
So would this apply to a November vote? I asked you that, but I'm not sure that we got communicated right, what that would mean. So if if we had a November vote, then the money would be available shortly after that if the town chose to vote, yes.
I don't think that would change anything, cause one, once we have an agreement, we would move forward with that and we would plan to build it in twenty-five.
Okay, that's the piece I didn't know too.
Okay, and and just to to um, piggyback off that, I did, when I was on the phone call, I got a little confused regarding timing, because I seem to recall that we talked about, um, well, you could wait until after the June meeting. Um, because I think that's what was brought up, but I I was wondering so we don't have um, an answer until November, what impact would that, does that have on the project?
I I don't think we would see a major.
Because the construction wouldn't happen in twenty-four anyway, except for the people you're already getting through to get to Fayette.
That's right.
Those people get, no matter what happens, they get fiber.
That's right.
And this project wouldn't happen till twenty-five, so so voting in November doesn't affect the project at all.
So if it, if it went referendum and and was voted on, you'd still need to have a special town meeting, right? Because you would still need to authorize the money and then, you know, you'd have to figure out where the money's coming from. So wouldn't you have to choose at that special town meeting whether or not to have a bond?
I'm assuming the referendum vote would be a special town meeting.
No?
No, that's, that's. But then you would still, even if you pass it, you still have to vote how you're gonna be for it.
Right. So depending, I guess it would be.
Thinking the article would say that.
The the language itself would reference the 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 money, is that right? I mean, that's what we've done in the past.
I think the article would say, not only that, why, how much money, but how would be paid.
Okay, I don't, I don't.
I don't know, I don't know that.
That's a good question.
Bryce, do you have a sense of that?
To follow up, it seems like if you had your one option and that's what you put on the the referendum question, then that would be your option, but I'd definitely follow up with MMA before I decided with that.
Yeah, we have time to find, to make sure of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But yeah, I think it would be a special problem. I was trying to make sure I get in order. I think I saw Mike and then I'll, I'll I'll do my best.
Yeah, another question's for Brian also.
Yeah.
I don't know the essence of this, but in terms of grants that we have, not just the grants for internet, but just grants in general. There's an reason why there could not be a grant secured to help pay for or pay down some of the loans that you may debt to bring us through. In other words, in the future, you've got the loan money, you're paying it, are there grants available that could be put towards paying it down sometime in the future?
The last six years, we haven't found them, but I'm not saying they don't exist. We've looked.
I saw Ty for Hildy and Jim, so Hildy, then back to you.
Is there any way that we can find out now how much five hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Is there any way that you can find out how much a loan, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years would impact my taxes?
Yeah, you were, you were working on that, right?
Do you have any sense of what that might be?
It would be four hundred and fifty thousand, not that that's nothing.
For this, you mean, you mean started for next year?
Yeah, we talked.
I gotta have a schedule in front of me of what we're looking at.
Can, yeah, can you summarize that, like what the payment annual payment would be for five years?
I'm gonna work through my trial system.
Is this related to that?
Looking, is is this the first public discussion of this? Have I missed one to four hours?
Of this particular plan?
This issue right now, is this the first public discussion?
Uh, by measure of, I mean, I guess technically it's the second.
So there seems to be, uh, there seems to be.
We talked last week about it at a public me- at a meeting.
But it was, it was pretty mental, sorry.
Yeah, but you're asking if it's.
We just got this proposed.
Yeah, I mean, jet, this is in the developing stages, yes, yes.
I'll continue, go ahead.
Yeah.
So I I believe it's in the last page of your packet too. It's just a quote from Anderson Bank. That was something like that would look like. You know, it shows you the schedule. So our first payment would be due uh, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, which is next fiscal year. Looks like the total payment would be a hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-one. It would be a little less, because this is based off five fifty and we have that RFP. The principal on a figure like that is ninety-six thousand and the interest payment would be thirty-seven thousand. So it's, the rates are a little higher than they were in years previous, or six point seven five percent.
So it's ge- generally the payment is, you're saying a hundred and thirty-three based on the five fifty, but.
The grand, the grand total, I mean, whi- which is based off the five fifty, so you know, our interest portion of that would be a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars on top of the five fifty.
And we had, we had a discussion a few, a few weeks ago about, uh, the number that relates to the mill or this, this current year's mill rate and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we I believe we we learned that about two hundred thousand was equal to one mill. Does that seem right? Is that what people remember?
I thought you said one hundred, but I'm.
I think it's two hundred.
It is two hundred.
I know people heard that. So it's a hundred. Coming up in this budget on the mill rate, uh, this is, this isn't to the penny, but a general idea, a two hundred thousand dollars, it was approximately one mill. Yeah, correct, correct. So, and the statement here was about a hundred thousand a year. Yeah. For five years.
It's about half a mill.
Correct. That's why I'm bringing up. Did you hear that, Hildy? You didn't? Do you want me to repeat it? You asked a question. It's, I'll get, I'll get back to you.
Ha- half a mill is is fifty dollars on a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value.
So is that basically if it's twenty dollars a mill, it would go to twenty dollars and fifty cents. Is that the way to interpret what you're saying? Be fifty cents on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, question, it's about thirty-seven thousand, thirty, twenty-three, sixteen, eight, so you have a decreasing um, interest payment over the five years. Is the tax rate going to be hit all at once with the one sixteen total? Or will the tax rate be hit each year based on solely interest payment that you're covering?
You'll pay back the principal too, right?
Yes.
Well, principal and.
So it's the same thing here across the board. You see, the total payment every year is gonna be the one thirty-three, two fifty-one.
Only it'll be less than that, because the amount's less.
We would only be hitting the tax rate, right, for the one thirty-three, not for the six sixty-six in total. How do, how do you cover that in the tax rate?
This is over five years. You pay one-fifth of it each year.
Okay, so that's all that hits the tax rate each year. It's not the total sum.
Correct.
That's the point of borrowing.
Yes.
If I could finish too, I was asking, at the first public meeting, there seems to be a whole lot of questions and uncertainties. And typically, if you put something on the warrant, we'll see that the select board either approves it or disapproves, and if a committee approves or disapproves. Has this gone before the budget committee yet? Have you considered this? Otherwise, are you putting something on the warrant that hasn't been through the normal channels that we do for one?
There is one more budget committee meeting and that's next.
I'm sorry?
There's one more budget committee meeting. It's next Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, so it's been a process, but no, it doesn't.
Just seems all rushed and I can't, to the light, me understanding the line.
So Jim, I think, I've been trying to remember the, um, what has happened. I think what occurred first was that um, Spectrum came in with a final deal that they were able to do. We um, decided not to move on that right away and within days of that, this came in. So we did some exploration and here we are talking about it. But to Hazel's point, um, wouldn't, if we're planning on putting out a warrant, wouldn't we be having a public um, a public meeting on this anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and I think at that point, we ought to have the state come in to explain people to people what the doing nothing portion of it would mean, so that, so that not only would they understand the the fi- one hundred percent fiber build out, they would also understand if they voted against it, what. If they voted against it, what what the eventuality may be.
As far as I understand. We got this recently. It seemed to us that it was something the town should vote on instead of the select board saying no. That's as far as we got. And that, you know, the most the the first point to vote on it is June, but we were talking right, we were talking in that about when would be the best time to vote on it. I think you're seeing more of a rush to this than we felt. We we just thought this was this was worth voting on. It was not something that we could say, let's not vote on it since a similar thing was already voted yes. We do weren't sure where we stood with consolidated. If it was November, we know now that that doesn't affect it. So this is all still in motion. It's not fixed and it's not, you know, I I don't feel that we're rushing. I just think this is something we need to bring to the town.
Uh Hazel and then Ford.
Do you have time to have a public hearing before the warrant has to go out?
Uh I think we're kind of close. I I would have to timeline, but.
Because this has to go to a public, well, it should go to a public hearing. It's gotta go to the budget committee. And then it's gotta get home to the warrant.
Now from it, sorry. I was trying to, I'm trying to.
We had that a public hearing on the warrant.
But the technicality is isn't is not the. Uh you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but is is isn't doesn't the floor going on the floor somehow change? The. Change the requirement for a public hearing where it's different if there's on a secret ballot? I don't, you don't have to answer that right now.
A secret or secret ballot referendum has, you can't put anything within sixty days of town being there still.
Right, but that but that has a that has a uh a pre-public hearing requirement so many days in advance of the vote.
Yeah.
Does the items that go on the floor at at town meeting have those same? Public hearing, or is that a public hearing?
That's from my experiences.
Yeah, I I get that. We can find out more about that and get some dates, but that is a question that I I need.
The discussion has moved toward being responsive to the demand to uh do it in November. Now it prevents us from having a public meeting in March, two months in advance.
Sure.
We're all these things and the way they look that's uh September. And so that's exactly the way you wanna go.
Yeah, I'm not hearing any input in favor of having this in June.
Yeah.
So let's.
Let's do that.
I think that's a good suggestion.
We'll just do that.
We have a hand in the back.
Yep. True, uh I think I said Ford and then I'm gonna hit Teresa. Thank you, sorry.
I'm still curious about this private road thing, if somebody would explain that to me. I think Ford wanted to speak to that.
And Stan, I know you had to vote on the other thing. I think with this in hand, you have to agree that other proposal was a bad deal. And and we rushed that and I don't think we should rush this. You've had two here in a couple of months. What's next? They get better as they come along. I think we need to. We need to, we need to, instead of rushing to decide when you're gonna vote on something, let's rush to get a group together so we can understand, please. Rather than worrying about voting, we get a grip on it. I just think this stuff has changed so fast and it just seems like. Like I said, we we were blessed, blessings come in funny ways, but we were blessed that we did not get that grant would be on the hook for one point eight million and we'd own the thing.
Yeah.
Makes it looking good.
Uh Teresa.
It's just a comment about the public hearings, the warrants. It seems like there wouldn't be public hearings for all the warrant articles, because otherwise we'd be. Going through the whole of warrant that we should go to the town meeting, I don't think.
That's. Yeah, that's kind of where I was, I know, I apologize, I should know this by now. I apologize, I just, it, I I'll get that clarity.
It's public hearings are the ones that I would never put their.
And that's that's how I understood it to be. But I I I don't wanna say, I just wanna clarify.
It's a public hearing requirement for ordinances, but that's a whole other thing.
You're fresh on memory how long you've been working on an internet for the town, Stan?
Oh, we, we're not just me. This is, this was the biggest issue that came up six years ago when I was running. I've been working on it for the last six years.
Two years ago, the town voted to take. Probably a worse deal, but they voted overwhelmingly to fund more money then.
And it was the best deal we could find at the time.
Wars law meets, you know what wars law is? Wars law states that every six, every eighteen months, technology probably dials or reduces speed by half. So in six years, everything's improved. If you keep waiting, you wait, everything is going to improve. But in the meantime, you're still waiting and have nothing.
Well, thank you, Todd. Everybody can get internet today. One way or another, you can get it today.
Here, hold on just a moment. Thank you. I wanna, I'm gonna turn back to the board here. We have a Lloyd brought up the suggestion about um.
Deferring this.
Deferring to November with the board would like to take action on that tonight.
Motion?
Yeah. I I I don't wanna close off discussion, but I think we've heard the points.
Boy, go ahead.
And I wanna thank.
Yeah, thank you, Simon.
Thank you, Simon. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Let's move on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Either defer or vote to put it on the November ballot.
I'd always put this on the November ballot and it and within a month or two, there's advance of it to hold the public meeting. For public hearing.
A series of meetings, yeah, yeah. Second.
Okay.
Uh any further discussion?
November ballot, public meetings.
With public meetings at least a month in advance.
And we can, we can reread it.
So so my only question regarding that motion is, does that mean that we are voting that this will go on? The November. Ballot period.
That's what.
So we're not, are we, we're not going to discuss it anymore? We're going to have it.
Well, it seems to me this is, this is June, this is May. We're gonna have new people on the board. They can always change a decision this board makes. We could say we're gonna table it for now. We can say we'll put it on the November ballot.
Shame, shame.
Having been involved in this for six years. I think there is uncertainty about whether it's gonna happen by itself. And that means that twenty percent of the town is gonna have very, very, very limited internet access and not be able to do some things people need to do. And I see voting on this as a way of deciding if we're gonna take control of that or if we're gonna wait, so just. Personally, I'm I'm in favor of us voting. I'm not in favor of the board saying not to vote, which seems to me anti-democratic. And I don't mean party. I just don't think five people should say it can't be voted on, but. But whether we decide to put it on the ballot or whether we just decide to wait functionally is the same question.
Right, okay.
I think.
That and that was basically my question, yeah.
You're asking if it's binding.
Yes.
We could also amend it as possible. Wait a second, discuss.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, um. Uh let's. Yeah, so we're going to open up. The public hearing for the application um. For uh the special amusement permit submitted by Sun NG Beaverbrook LLC. And was, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
If you're open to public mir- hearing on the special amusement permit.
Uh discussion.
You wanted to focus the discussion. You wanted to talk about the focus of the discussion, I think.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, well, all in favor of opening the hearing and I'll introduce it.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. So um. In an effort to have everyone's point heard, everyone's questions. Heard, please facilitate hand raising through the board, through upfront. It's the best way we can communicate, so we. It's important. I'm gonna set, we're gonna do a three minute time. When the timer goes off, wind down, finish your point. We will not come back to you until others have been heard. I I know, I know the conversation gets uh going. Please try to raise. Points that have not been heard. Do your best. I know it it may it may be nuanced, it may have subtleties. Uh and then finally, this is a public hearing. Specifically regarding the application for the special amusement permit. And this, the the request and the application is for a type of entertainment. I see live DJ. One man circus. Fireworks, I believe I've. Is that accurate? Yes, okay. So at this point, the public hearing is. Open and we'll we'll start taking comments and questions. Jim?
You spoke at the last meeting about placing decibel meters strategically around. Fireworks are gonna go above the numbers that you were talking about last time, so now you're contradicting yourself or say we're gonna put on meters to make sure it doesn't go over decibel level. But they're asking fireworks, which we know are going to do it. What are we gonna do about that?
It's a contradiction in the ordinance, isn't it? And then this is the problem is it it includes fireworks and then it sets a decibel level. Which is an impossible condition to meet, so we have to decide. We have to decide which side of that to fall on. We can't fall on both sides of it. For that night, a decibel measurement makes no sense at all.
Right, and 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 if I understood the discussion last night, the decibel meeting with measurement was all about that night.
No, it's about, it's about every, about the whole city, but it's about any entertainment event and there are two others in this. So the decibel measurement, I think, would only apply to the other two events here. Cause there's no point trying to measure the fire fireworks.
DJ and then the one man circus.
Right, that's that's, that's how I understand it, right? I was thinking the same thing. Right. That 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 this is in perfect ordinance and in the future, but that's, there's a contradiction there that can't really can't be resolved. Without us just deciding.
Me meaning you could still, this could still be approved, knowing that the fireworks are above the.
That's how I see it. That's how I see it, because it does say fireworks are included, so. We have to, you know, that's up to us to decide, I think, right? Is that is that how people see it? That's what I was thinking too. About, oh, we're not gonna measure the decibel level of fireworks and expect, yeah, the subject.
Since you're that uh, if I read this right, the fireworks contractor is gonna have to apply for the permit. Which will only be done a week in advance. I don't know where that leaves us.
What has to do with the weather. But we can say we could approve it contingent on the other license.
Yeah.
The other thing that's that's that uh, I appreciate what you said about security. Um the ordinance doesn't give us a a choice. As you, as I'm sure you see in the ordinance, the ordinance says shall hire licensed security personnel, so we have to require that. And I know you said, you said that was that you were that uh you weren't arguing with that.
Oh, another question of the one night. Fireworks like repeatedly, I thought you said you were gonna add them once.
No, we only have one fireworks.
Okay.
It'll be for about fifteen minutes.
Do we need to, uh if we're going to have be voting on this, does it need to save one firework time?
In you guys' packet, you do have the. With that was paper click to the application.
Okay.
Chris had given me a packet and you'll see from the central main fire techniques and the state fires and market's office with. Date of display, time, number of aerial shells. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Other thought, so it's a hearing, anything else from the public about specifically about this application?
That's it.
Well, um I don't recall seeing on any of the recent application. I I, you know, there's nothing posted, so none of us have um your. The application to refer to. But at the last meeting, the question was, I asked the question of five contains if I find. So Stan, if you're willing to have this revised application, there's.
It says over that and there's a statement that the difference over five hundred is of at its own expense, the licensee shall post a licensed security guard. And in the application, it says they're gonna do that.
We we have, we have not seen the application to know that they they have checked off a lot, so there will be around five hundred. That will be a licensed security guard, so I'm assuming that the power of first, um you know, that would be somebody above and beyond. Just the park rangers that you have.
Yes, and I'll reach out to a security alone.
And I wanna speak in favor, Bryce. I mean, we're running shorthanded here. And we're not, we're not getting everything out as quickly as everybody would like to, as we would like to. I have a sense that Bryce is running as fast as he can to stay in place and he's got a lot of moving parts and. We're doing our best. Well, I I I I wanna say that I believe Bryce is doing his best.
It's just hard to.
Agreed.
I think I wanna, I I think it's important to respond to that to make sure I understand specifically what you're looking for. You were, you were looking for this. Application, is that correct? And is it generally, do we generally? Uh put up on the internet, private applications for other?
I I don't generally, I think this is the same version I emailed you. It's amended. That's the change. So if you would have asked, I would have given it to you, but I don't generally post. Our website would be full.
And I and I understand that you, um I mean. Prior, nobody used to be, this used to be, this was the kind of thing that was included in the um agenda pack.
Would it be, so it wasn't in the package?
This has been in the packets.
Not in the online, not in.
Oh, no, in the past.
Oh, I understood. So it wasn't in the select board meeting? Got it. I understand. I thought I thought you were asking for a a specific post on, I I understand. Thank you. That's why I asked. I get it.
I just want.
Yeah.
To see if this revised, um you know, at the, at the. Five hundred population.
No, I understand. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Seeing no other input, I move we close the public hearing.
All in favor? Okay.
Move, we approved the application.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right. Oh, so we have.
There were an old business, so KLT land transfer.
Uh KLT land transfer, uh how would we like to? I know Ken is here tonight, uh and he's been spearheading much of this along the way. Would you like to? Would you like to comment, uh come forward? You're you've been as much involved or more involved than than all, I well, than many. Do you want to sort of catch us up to speed to and then? Then we can open up discussion.
Ever changing scenario, um with the new law last year about the tax part. Property, tax part property, like, you know, in another way that's passed this year, which is going to go into effect in uh. July sixteenth or seventeenth. So the the last decision that was made was that the. It would something be something on the warrant, the warrant article. Uh that would give the. Select board authority. So I I just got back from Ireland. So the last decision was that the uh select board would uh put on the. Tell more, an article that would give the uh select board the authority to transfer the property. Uh to. The law which goes into effect. In July. Will actually require the town to either sell the property. Uh through an open market process. Or hold on to the property and. Basically end up paying. Theoretically, a transfer can still happen if it happens before. July sixteen or seventeen. But added into that mix, there is a. An effort to put together a class action lawsuit. Um, that would require. All towns to go back to all proposals and. If, and, and use one of those processes. So this goes way beyond the hundred eighty. What I'm suggesting in the discussion with senators, we haven't had a conservation issue. Would be to, to still have a warrant article. Uh, but they would not be as strictly broader. That would. Give the select board the authority to choose one of those paths. As this becomes more fair. So it would give the authority to make the transfer prior to a transfer to an organization. Prior to, uh, July sixteen or seventeen. But would also allow you to. Decide not to do that and go through the sale or basically buy. Thank you. Not a, not a happy situation for us, having spent. Virtually thousands of dollars.
You've done so much on this. It really seems like the most prudent thing to do is to wait a little bit, but also to have the authority to act in the future.
Or the authorities able to act if something becomes clear so that we can move on it.
And then the, uh, town attorney has, I, I made a suggestion on word before I saw the town attorney's suggestion. And I, I need to study the town attorney's opinion on the word. There's one part that I. It's complicated too, because we've had a founding agreement. That we've done that, that where the, our butters who agreed to something were much more magnanimous. And where that line can be drawn, really because it was their understanding that it's gonna be. Uh, tail to property with, with public access trails. Uh, and then there's the land trade. Where we did very well, we did a butter also. Um, and how that's going to be treated, that, that partially got from them. Uh, that's not part of the tax.
So. Trying to summarize what you're asking me to do here real quick.
What I'm asking at this point is the select board. Put an article on the town law.
Right.
That would, uh, allow voters to vote to give the select board the authority to move in one of those directions. As they get the information.
Are we gonna have any more information by the time the town meeting, or is it just?
Well, this will be for after.
This will be great. It will have to happen. Anything you did would rely on. Um, what the vote was.
Well, all right, let's, let's say that they. They won't be in favor of retaining of, of giving the property to somebody. Who would that be?
Well, the proposal is to vote in favor of giving the select board future authority to decide which path to follow. Based on how the, how the legal discussions turn out.
Decibel legal, does the law give you, uh, a deadline as to when this is to be accomplished, or when we put projects?
If you choose to do a transfer.
Yeah.
It has, would have to be done by July sixteen. When that law goes into effect.
Okay, so we could be, still be fine if we do it, if we, if we vote for it.
Maybe, but maybe.
Which would make everything retrograde, which, which is a, has much greater frankly impact than just the.
So, so this just allows us to move when we get the information that. Points this in the right direction rather than having.
But part of, yeah, part of the answer to your question is. There may be more information between now and July sixteen, but there's not gonna be definitive.
Do you have any information on the class action lawsuit? In pursuit of timing?
I don't. The first thing I, first time I've read about it was today.
I, I'm gonna answer a question.
Ken, can you recap the two options? One was to sell, return to sell the property.
There are three options.
Three options, okay. Can you recap those?
The first option is to transfer the property to a non-profit organization. To achieve the purpose that the town voted for the last.
I'm sorry, clarification. My question is, what is the law change coming on July sixteen or seventeen?
The law change goes around. The law changed last year. Said that anytime the town chooses to sell tax applied property. They had to give notice to the former owner. And the former owner could request. Uh, within ninety days, that they go through a real estate agent. The real estate pays, uh, would sell the properties and anything above any. Income from that sale above and beyond the town's costs. The, the property up to that point, including all back taxes, would go to the former owner. The change in the law. Is that it took away the need for the. Former property owner to request it. It made it automatic that if the town chooses to sell, they have to go through a real estate agent, sell the property. Get the money to the former owner. If they can't get the money to the former owner, it goes into the abandoned property, uh, of state account. And then the change was that. First of all, it made that selling automatics, the, the property that you have to request. The other change was that it addressed the question that had not been addressed previously, and that is what happens if the town chooses to hold on to the property. That was not in the previous law. And, and, and this law, in the new law, if it go into effect in July. It requires the town to get an appraisal of the property value. Then the town figures out how much they put into this property already. And they have to give. The difference between the appraised value and their investment. To the former owner or the estate.
Is that the appraisal, so what it's worth today, or the appraisal, what, what, what?
Guess is that it's what it's worth today.
Yeah, I, I understood it.
And this is for, for people who are just hearing about this now, this came about because of abuses of tax forfeiture. By several towns in Maine that took a ta, took places, uh, took land for taxes. That were not anywhere near the value and then sold the land at a very low price. To somebody else, you know, so there, 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 there have been serious abuses of forfeiture. And then people wound up losing property that was worth much more. And so this was to correct that, and, right?
Yeah, well, there's also a, a case in Minnesota that was brought. Similar to ones that are now being brought to pain, which made its way up to the US Supreme Court, which decided that that was a taking development.
And that, the, the, um. Suit you're talking about is based on that and the state constitution, so it's, it could be very wide ranging, so. Uh, towns that had done this years ago might now have to come up with this money.
Right, that's mine.
That's the way I read it, and we won't, we won't know until that suit works its way through.
Right.
Now, is. If we can make this work, is, is K L T really to accept the property in June, in July one? Uh, or not?
What, oh, sorry, I, I won't. We can ask Theresa to weigh in on that, but we did receive communication from K L T that's in your email, that does answer that question, but. If Teresa wants to comment on that, you're more than welcome, but we also have your email, so however you wanna choose.
If you wanna summarize what I think.
Yeah, so. So, to answer your question, I, I was under the impression that K L T is not interested at this moment in time. Is that correct, based on the current situation? Uh, but feel free to expand. That's, that, that's basically the answer. Yeah.
Yeah, as you all know, our. To, um, support, um, for the future ownership of the property. And what we didn't know about this, this work group that was working in the legislative. Still, it was fascinating. And certainly didn't know about the class action lawsuit that was in the Bank of Hillary's last week. So, um, we, and we, um, read the summary from the town attorney, I'm still on the sauce here. And putting all that together, the two bills in the legislature last year, this year, the last action lawsuit, our board is not comfortable. At this point, um. Taking the property, um, even the town board, you know, all town people said. I'll be watching that, but there's just too much up in the air with these bills. And we just need to wait to get some sense of where this is going. I, I will say that what I told Ken today was great admiration for. All the work people have done in town. I, I think if, if push comes to shove, the town has to, um, purchase this property and they want it, they wanted to be concerned. We can, you know, collectively figure out whether or not we can raise the money to purchase it in that way. Whether that's in front of the town, whether it's on K L T or another entity. So I, I think these bills are really as Stan said, trying to address, um, this whole issue that the Supreme Court. Aggressed in Minnesota, and this particular project is. In the time frame of this, this legislation that, that the legislature has.
Well, that's a pretty, that's a court, that case in Minnesota, that was about federal actions, or was that meant to apply to all types of, uh?
It was a, it was a Minnesota case that ended up in the US Supreme Court.
State.
And so the US Supreme Court's, um, decision on that affects the entire country. And that's the reason for Maine changing.
Local, any level of government.
I, I don't know if it affects federal, like, I would expect that it would, but I don't know that the federal government takes. Property on taxes.
So as far as tonight, tonight goes, I think the board, uh, should deter, uh, are we gonna choose to put? A warrant article on, and do we have to, um? Uh, do we have to, this is the timing question again, do we have to pick exactly what the warrant language is tonight? Or can we, can we take action to determine we're going to put it on, or could we want to?
We're gonna nail down the warrant.
Okay.
But not tonight.
Okay.
So I think, I think we should do it. I don't think we have to take action tonight.
Okay. Okay, I just wanna, that's the, okay.
The reason we have to do something is that the language in the last warrant article about this didn't exactly have the right wording. To allow the board to take action, and we need to enable the board to do it, then we need to wait, and I think. I was thinking about what Teresa said, and I certainly agree with what you're saying, and the point is that the liability recruited the town. If we were to give this away, and then it turned out that we were responsible to the heirs. For the value of the property, it would be the town that would be responsible to the heirs. So we really have to know what's happening before we take any kind of action.
And also, I, I would say it. This ties in, we're, the, the board's gonna have to, uh, update, amend, address our town. Is it a policy or an ordinance?
They have a policy on tax.
For tax property, we'll have to have to look at that in a few or two. I, uh, some more, uh, Hazel than Teresa.
I just wanna add. Makes, we've got ahead, um, um, the homework on this issue, like the two bills that you actually could pass. So Massachusetts is now looking at the Supreme Court case and realizing that they. Need legislation similar to what Maine has, and I think this is just gonna be a ripple back across the country. So I think because somebody was on the name of the state of Maine and saw the Supreme Court case. They got this on the legislature and then passed, you know, two bills for that, so. You can look at that from whatever perspective, it's just. If, if this project had happened ten years ago, I don't know if the town would still be liable. I mean, it's all depends on where this class action lawsuit goes. I think we're just gonna have to know that, but I, I do think that this property is important for the town to be going as part of the big block of, I don't know, land. Sure to have that, um, we can just think freely about how, how that would happen.
Thank you. Hazel.
So I'm not sure why the board has to vote to take action if K L T is not interested based on the current situation. The world drove in the class action, like, what do you, what do you take action on?
Because maybe other organizations that are willing to.
Or the board might decide to sell it on a private market, because the board needs to be empowered to take future action. At some point, the board will have to do something, but.
Future unknown action.
Right, the board, the, the, the options are sell, keep, give, with the board has to be prepared to. The, the board can only do any of those things if it's empowered to do it by town mayor.
And the purposes are clear in the, in the, yes. In the, uh. Which was for the conservation and protection. You know, once you couldn't sell it to somebody, well.
Yeah, legally, we may be on the hook for the balance of value of it in any case. So, so then what do we do with the property and? How do we, how do we proceed? And so to have that authority already rested with us, it would say. Um, try to play catch up, as things become clearer.
And I think, I think that, that's sort of where, where I was headed Hazel too. There's a broader question on how our policy aligns with. These new, this new legislation. Cause we've been, we've been operating on tax wire, you know, we've had, uh, tax wire properties in the past where I believe that policy. Gives such authority to the board, uh, so. I see, cool, cause I'm, I, this just, I, do you, are you, do you have this in front of you? Was this in the packet, or was this just on our table? Okay, so this, this clearly came in today regarding, um. Sort of legal advice on this, so I think for tonight, we're not gonna take any action. I think we're gonna review some of these, uh, warrant. Uh, uh, drafts, and also follow up on some of these other questions. Okay. Thank you. So we are in, we have busy nights tonight.
Land use ordinance changes.
Yes, Chip, thanks for hanging around.
No problem.
No, no problem.
Been a long day. Uh, before I go over the material you have in front of you, I wanna give you a quick background, which I think. I've given you partially throughout the last year and a half. I need your help. I need everybody here's help. This issue is about a state mandate. They're mandating certain laws. Having to do with affordable housing, auxiliary dwelling units, and the definition of mobile homes. What it's doing is in their mind, opening up the market to more living space. Albeit that, right or wrong, it is mandated that we change our L U O. To fit this in, just like you had two years ago with Shoreland, okay? This is not about Jellystone. There's nothing in here that has anything to do with Jellystone. So please put that aside. We need to get this done. And I put a lot of hours into this myself, and I'll go through that history too. But keep in mind that this is something the state has required for the last two years to get us in. Into our, uh, land use ordinance. They gave smaller towns a break last year, allowing us in a year to catch up. Catch up times here. This goes into effect in July, and they expect that we have something ready. That's piece number one, clarifying what this is about and what it's not about. Two, um. Partially in anticipation of this, but also other things that you heard about tonight. And we've had over the last year shortcomings in our land use ordinance and ordinances. There's a lot of discrepancies, there's a lot of things that go against each other, I heard probably three or four tonight. So in light of that, your interim select person, uh, no, I guess select person, up here, man, town manager, sorry. And I were at, Kathy was there too. We were at a, uh, main, uh. And I were at a, Kathy was there too. We were at a uh main uh municipal, you made me this full meeting. Back last fall and we ran into this group called General Code. And went over there, cause I, you know, like like what I saw, we had a spiel, stayed in contact with this gentleman. And he was very valuable in telling us what their services were. Very basic, very bottom line. What they do is they take your town ordinance, especially our land use ordinance. And other, any others that you want to include, and I think we've included about five or six, including recreation and R V parks, campgrounds. Um, there's a list of them. They take these in, they have experts um. In different states, they've got two very good ones in Maine that deal with state law. So they go through it, look for things that are go against each other. We gave them a list too. They dissected, selected whatever, you know, they have computer programs that work with it. Their final product will be something that we can put online. So anybody doesn't have to go through this. Bonus, we had somebody in this town a couple of years ago that did a lot of research on what every part of this. When it was voted on, when it came up, I made copies of that for them. So in this final product, you go to it online. You'll be able to, you know, click on something. They'll say, well, this came from the nineteen sixty-two select person meeting. So there'll be a lot more. So they're gonna do an extensive thing. When I got the quote, my jaw rocked. I thought it was so reasonable. It was for our town, originally eleven, but the final one came in around ten thousand dollars. Correct, correct, if I'm wrong.
And there was a grant.
Well. At that time, we are in some major financial problems, as I understand, heard tonight in the office and everything. We found out that there was a grant for this L D two thousand three. To hire consultants to work, you know, our work.
I get it.
And so we applied, applied for it. We got it. Guy was really nice and did it. So that's there to pay for this L D, not well, it's there for L D two thousand three. But we're applying it against the whole mess.
Was paying for the codification.
Pay for the whole project. Now, the fact, the downfall to that is, is that it wasn't, it was all done, all paperwork, all the, you know, I had to go in it to get this going. This would not have been ready for our deadline in July. I had a few people on the planning board working on it and it was just. I Doug and Ed did a, you know, a yeoman's job coming in once a week, working on it, but they couldn't quite get there. I panicked about a month ago and three weeks ago, I'll say, and I did this with Reed Field. And Reed Field spent eight thousand dollars just to do the L D two thousand three project. And I sat through multiple meetings with multiple consultants, consultants. Hearing all upside downside, the distillation of what had to go into theirs. Bottom line, about two months ago, they came back after a bunch of meetings and Reed Field had a ten page compilation. Of how they're affected, what had to be changed in their ordinance, and it was just a beautiful piece of work. And that's been accepted over there. We've borrowed from Reed Field before, um, solar ordinance, um. We borrow from them. And so, you know, flashy brilliance, I was like, hey, you know, we gotta get something done. So I took that list, I took my background and everything and spent an inordinate amount of hours over two weeks. Taking the Wayne ordinance, comparing it to the Reed Field ordinance, figuring out where it gets interjected. Figuring out what things have changed, what's new. I think if you look at this work, the majority of them come up in uh Article Three. We'll see a lot of red words and that's all the stuff that came from the state. Which goes into what's gonna be allowed, what the town has to allow you didn't do before, what has to be changed. Um, so that being said, I came up with this. Uh, distilled it, talked to our town attorney. Um, I hope to have this in front of the planning board Thursday night. We're on a fast track here, folks, to get this done. I'm not pushing it. I'm just telling you that we gotta get done and we've been blessed with the money to do it and. Get my time and blood in this whole thing. I'd like you to guys to review this, look over it and hopefully. Give it your blessing so it can go to a town warrant. So we can have that for. The meeting. Um, let me just finish everything up. I've given a copy of this final copy electronically to. Our town attorney, he welcomed it. I gave a copy of this to General Code, the people that are doing our overall project. The woman that is doing our project was mag magnificent. She says. We don't usually do this. It's a process and everything else, but I know you guys are crunched. Let me look at it. She looked at it. She says, I like this. I want to use it. She gave me a weekend of her work. No extra charge, where she went through it and found some other discrepancies and everything. So this has been a lot of work with a lot of people to get this thing done. I hope you. Uh, can appreciate what's gone into this. I hope you understand the seriousness of this. And what makes it even better is, is that General Code will be using this. And distilling it through our final project. So if there's anything that's missed, which naturally there's gonna be some of this size. They're gonna fix it. They're gonna fix it if there's something different. The state comes down. They're gonna fix it if they see some, you know, discrepancies and things. But for right now, this is the best I could do for you and I'm gonna encourage you. Number one, help deliver the message that this is a state mandate. That's what this is about, nothing else. Number two, look it over. Please give it a, you know, a thumbs up vote so we can meet the deadlines to get it on the warrant. And as I said, the planning board will visit this Thursday night. I hope that they pass it. They've all had copies of this. I've bothered them every day. If they pass this, um, there'll be a public meeting two weeks after that. And hopefully, that'll get it done, send it on to you guys for a public meeting. Hopefully, we can get this done in the short time we've got. Sorry, it's uh. So rushed, so everything else, but I think I heard a lot tonight about things trying to get through. I did my best to get it done for the town of Wayne. Help me out. That's.
It's just a state mandate.
Yeah.
Express expressed in the kinds of changes that have to be to allow the accessory dwelling. And is this your formal vote from the board?
Um, they're gonna have to, cause it's gonna have to go to a town war.
Right, at the point where we nail down the warrant, they're gonna have to vote to include it.
Right.
But I think, you know, that I can't, I can't remember a time when we had a proposed ordinance from the planning board that we didn't bring it to a vote. That's kind of that's been the process, but yeah.
Right.
Once the planning board's done.
Sure.
Understand, just try and get.
Yeah, so I get it. I get it. I mean, I think the history is when the planning board brings forth an ordinance, the select board puts that on the warrant.
Right.
Yeah.
This isn't really an ordinance. This is a.
All I mean is revision.
Revision like all these other.
Amendments to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your hard work.
So the um changes, the red one, which probably just pertaining to the.
Yes, it's called L B two thousand three and it's. Have you seen this one?
No.
Take a look at chat, uh, Article Three, you'll see the kind of work. It's a lot of things that to us is a. You know, municipality don't make a lot of sense, but the state is mandating it and getting it into your rules. Just take a look, I mean.
And this is built around municipalities where the block to there being enough housing is there being enough land.
I I don't know.
It's not based on rural towns, really.
Well, it's not, but we have to deal.
We have to do it, right. I agree.
The public here, or sorry, this, the planning board is taking this on in. That's primary agenda item on Thursday, what behind.
Public meeting on Thursday, if they find it complete and they approve it. We will schedule a special meeting of the planning board. Two weeks from then.
Specifically address.
Just for that, that's.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold back a lot of comments about this and if you have questions, comments, read over and let's do it, let's do it there. I I appreciate the feedback, but. Excuse me.
I will, I will have it on.
That's a good question.
We will put it online tomorrow.
Thank you. Yeah, I I know there's a lot to talk about. I have questions myself, but we're gonna do it. That'll be the uh for the planning board. One more on this mic.
Some question I have. It's something, what's the impact to the town that doesn't do this guy? What's the town in?
The town impact is, is that like everything, like shoreline and everything, we can modify certain things to make it fit our ordinance. If we leave it to the state, there's a lot of open and broadly definable things that can be a problem. Again, the way I propose this is, is to bring it into our land use ordinance. So it can be, you know, defined for Wayne.
Right.
And if there comes a time when somebody's gonna add, folks, I've had a lot of calls already asking for applications on these type things. It's it's a paradigm change here. Um, but it gives us an opportunity to have it here in Wayne's version. I can't make, you know, less strict in terms of what the state did, but I can make it more strict in terms of, you know, working with Wayne, so.
Thank you. No, that's a good question. So. Stay tuned, or that's all, it's on the website, meeting schedules, times, locations. For the planning.
As we move along, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Follow the website.
Yeah, follow the website. Uh. Thanks, Chip. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's see, we've got. I keep losing. Nine D?
D boy.
Review very, very small change in personnel balance.
Sure, uh, is it Amy, is this?
Sure, I can just give you a bit of backstory. So last year, we discovered several issues related to vacation liability. The vacation caps that were outlined in the handbook, just uh, they weren't set up in the payroll system and several employees just uh. They had more time or food than the cap. And so at the time, um. The town manager made some changes to the payroll setup to correct this. Uh, once it was done, employees who exceeded the caps no longer earned any time. And we encouraged employees to use their time and several employees did, um, based on policy, were able to cash in some of their. Um, time. Uh, also at the time, we did a complete rewrite of the employee handbook. Um. And at that time, we kept in the ability to cash in vacation time. Due to the need to bring our vacation balances below those caps as soon as possible. Um, and so right now, there are no employees that have exceeded vacation caps. And so the only change to this policy is just removing the ability to cash in unused vacation time. Now, this doesn't, when employees leave employment, this, their unused vacation time is paid out to them already. That's all, that that didn't change. Um, but the town doesn't budget for this vacation liability. It, and it's really been an issue mostly. Through the longevity and there can also be a timeline between when an employee leaves and when anyone's hired. So. Um, when it doesn't happen, it's generally not a financial, uh, not a big deal, but it does can cause a financial hiccup. Um, as an unbudgeted expense. Uh. What I did do is I asked several nearby towns what they do and essentially they budget higher payroll costs just uh to cover that potential payout. And most towns do not allow for a cash in process. Um, so anyway, this is just uh removing that one, one ability in there.
My move, we approved the change, so the good change to the personnel policy. Something we talked about before.
Yes.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of it? Great, thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna s- give. D, right, let me.
We did D.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about.
Yeah.
All right.
About a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And we have an amortization schedule. So those are two things we'll have for the future.
Perfect. Uh, supplements, uh, town manager report.
So first for me, I have, uh, we need to dedicate, formally dedicate, make a motion to. You're gonna dedicate our annual report to.
We talked about ideas.
I thought we had a list.
We did. I have, I have even names we. We uh.
Is is that usually public or do you guys do that in executive session?
I don't see that, I don't see there's an executive session category that we could use. It wouldn't be personnel, it wouldn't be legal opinion. There there aren't, there aren't, there aren't, it wouldn't be contract. There aren't that many things we can go into executive session for.
Now, public.
So we briefly looked over it and I think we probably had a book night that night as well, but I had. Kind of the consensus I got from the board was Peter All, Jeanie Dawson and Mary Farm were the three. I don't know if anybody else recalls.
Dallas, wasn't Dallas on the list too?
Probably.
He was on cover last year.
What?
Which a consideration might be, he was on the cover last.
Oh, that's right. That's okay. That's right. Yeah, yeah. I thought there was a fourth, but I'm, but I wouldn't trust my memory for anything. Those are important people.
We can do one quick review and then, cause we gotta stop with the.
But we need to decide, cause we're going ahead and want this.
I support you.
You're fine.
It's hard to choose, but boy. Those people have given so much to the town.
I had given before the would pass.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, but sometimes we.
We owe, we owe each of those three people a lot.
Anybody wanna take action, move, move, we do that.
Move, we follow through with our earlier plans on dedication.
Okay.
Somebody has something else.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of it? Okay, great, uh.
And then I did have a request and I didn't know how to handle this, so I wanted to bring it to the board. Um, Candace Sykes would like to rent the North Wayne Schoolhouse once a month for her group of fiddlers to meet. They play at Winter Library and other places. Uh, Candace's mother was a uh Joan Corcoran. Who lived in North Wayne and Candace feels an attachment to the area and loves the school building.
Where are they from? Does it live in Wayne?
No.
I missed uh, the person who's requesting does not live in Wayne?
No.
Okay.
What's the condition of the schoolhouse at this point? Is it, is it usable? Is it, is it healthy to be inside it? I was talking to Allison when she was starting to clean up inside it. She said she was having trouble breathing after being in there, so.
Yeah, it is an oval building, so.
I think it's okay. I think it's, the public can use it.
And we're just talking about a once a month use.
Yes, right.
But I I'd like us, I'd like us to really know that it's not gonna hurt somebody being in there.
Is there a bathroom in there? There, there's an outhouse sign.
I'm more concerned about mold and asbestos and lead and whatever else, but. I don't know. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying we should say no, I just wonder.
We, we always had children's um school programs.
Well, that's true.
There, and I think, I think it needs to be used again.
I agree.
As a historical.
Is there a general interest from the board to maybe, maybe we can. Uh, if it's, if it's a renting or a less, they they want, they're offering to rent it.
Yeah.
Maybe we can work out some uh. Yeah, language around, around that.
Have to be in agreement for sure, so I can work on it.
But if there's general consensus to move the relationship forward.
Yeah.
That building needs to be painted and taken care of and maybe rental money might help.
Sure, sure, that's great. Yes, if you can get, when you have time. I circle back.
Yeah.
I think there's interest.
Related to that, like you mentioned, is that the A G home program found today, found out today that the church's. Deadline for us to be out of the space where now is the end of June. Not August, and we really don't have another place. The fellowship hall hasn't had the bathroom repairs and all of it make it accessible. So we need to be. If we're thinking about a spa, if we're thinking about use of town buildings, that's, that's into, we haven't met to talk about what we're gonna do, but. It's been such a great thing to have a space to have, to have people meet and, and um. You know, reduce the isolation that they experience that we gotta, we gotta think about that. But that's if we have a building that's usable. Um, it'd be wonderful to think about it. We, we went and looked at the townhouse, a couple of us, but. It's clear that that's, that that's not a building that we could use, so.
It's not heated.
Right.
Exactly, so it would only be.
Oh, the, the, the schoolhouse.
In the summertime.
Right.
Are there any environmental checkups we should do to make sure there is no mold or? Um, would we need to get it cleaned out for, you know, dustiness and we should go visit it there. We should check it out. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. We have a responsibility as a landlord, in other words, to provide health and safe conditions. I, I wouldn't want us to have liability.
That's what I'm concerned about. But I mean, why can't things like that be simple? But.
What?
I said, why can't things like that be simple?
Of course.
But I think that we need to make sure that. There are not those things going on there.
But a lot of this testing is free. I know the town has an asbestos test kit, got a, cause I wrote to the state and had it sent. Wrote to the state and had it sent so that Ally could use it if she was gonna work in there. So some of this stuff would be very easy to check out. Just time, which was short of.
And then next would be the, just update on the budget. Really, the big one is. The meeting next week, joint between the board and the budget committee.
Yeah. That's one, we'll do that.
And, uh, lastly, kind of an odd report I have, but, um. Next week, it's gonna be me, myself and I in the office and. As much as I love to wait on the public, I have a hard time getting anything done, so.
And you got a ton of stuff to do. I think we gotta cut back the hours.
Yeah, just your thoughts on that or what potential?
What days make the most sense to be, uh, supportive of the residents?
What's your suggestion?
Yeah.
Wasn't there some support from, um, Jessica on Friday at all?
We haven't followed up with that, but our, our, uh, previous employee Jessica does work on Fridays and.
Oh, and she knows the routine.
She's willing. She's willing to work on Fridays.
Oh, that's great.
You know, if she can, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not somebody you'd have to train that much.
Again, for this, within this year, I don't know if the funding.
Oh, we don't have the money, of course.
So my, the point of, for next week, I think we just, even if it's just one day or it's a half day, just for me to. Really focus.
Well, what's your proposal? And I, the other thing, the other thing is, I think that's something you can decide.
Yeah.
Well, I want to get a sense of the board. I think that's your decision, not ours.
I just like to have it posted.
Yeah, for sure. I'll have it figured out.
Wanna have it posted.
Oh, of course, of course.
Generous to yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever, with whatever.
Yeah, I'll have it posted by tomorrow. I'll try to figure it out.
Okay.
I'm good.
These are the people right now who'll be out getting after you anyway, so, so.
So I'm present because obviously Bryce is doing a phenomenal job in basically doing the job of multiple people. The puzzle that there's no money to hire either an administrative assistant or somebody to. Like cover the, the.
Yeah.
The hours when this backup need needed.
I think, I think part of it is that we owed, um. The previous town manager. Um, funds what we left.
Yeah, we can't.
Talk about that. I was done in executive session, but.
Yeah, we can't go over the budget.
Yes.
That's where it comes to.
First thing we had in the office, so it was able to cover. We also had, um. In, uh, the general administrative, there was another, um, bookkeeper line item that we had some additional funds. Um, but right now that's, um, we're using that to cover. The bookkeeper, because the town manager was also the bookkeeper. And so we have to have additional circumstances for that. Um, but yeah, budgeting process, we should add more next year. Hmm.
All right. Member reports, public comment?
Anything from the board tonight?
Nothing important. I, I said mine about AJ, but we'll, we'll, we'll be back to you when we have a sense of what to do about it.
Uh, public comments? Hazel.
Yeah, I'd like to ponder the aging at home thing, the impressions being given in the church. I think forced out and my understanding and I can't speak to church. My understanding is the church was very willing to work with aging at home, offered alternate space.
Yeah.
Um, but the impression is that they're being kicked, kicked to the curb and then now gotta go look at a building that you just said, well, is it safe for other people like, um.
Well, I've probably.
I think there's other, this, this other place, places in the church that.
Okay.
They were willing to provide a nice environment.
I want to retract what I said, Hazel, you're right.
There are plans in place to remediate some of the issues which will make fellowship hall much more workable. Um, not just for aging at house, but for other use of that space.
I mean, I'd appreciate if you'd let me rewind what I said and said that we just learned the death of the timelines changed. And we're not sure what'll be ready by that point and what we're gonna do. That's all.
And there are still usable.
Yeah.
Admittedly, fellowship hall bathroom is not very desirable.
Yeah.
But there's a fully accessible bathroom upstairs and rooms that I believe they can make available upstairs.
You're right. My apologies.
Yes.
Wanted to ask about the, um, moratorium ordinance on Harvey Parks in, in Campgrounds, which. Development, which, you know, passed on April sixteenth by an overwhelming margin. Uh, so now the, but the timeline has started to tip with respect to, uh. The, uh, moratorium period. And I just wanted to know what the select ordinance plan was in terms of moving forward with the review process. Um, so that, um. Whatever, uh, study needs to be done and changes or amendments can happen, uh, within a lot of time. So i- is there a plan? And if so, what is the plan? What's the timeline for moving forward with the review process?
Yeah, those are good questions, um.
I know. We're really waiting on deliberation from the town attorney who's working with Jellystone's attorney, who's working with representation from anyway, so.
Well, I have to say, I really don't think that's a satisfactory answer because regardless of whether or not maybe some dispute about whether the ordinance applies or doesn't apply to Jellystone, which I won't get into. That's a subject for another day. Lawyers are gonna deal with that. I would say our Alex lawyer has done and wrote a lengthy letter explaining in great detail with legal citation. Exactly what the law is and why the moratorium ordinance clearly applies, uh, to Jellystone, but that's not the issue. A law has been passed by six to one by the voters in this town. That has enacted and, uh, a, a moratorium in developments. Which is a signal that the existing ordinance needs to be reviewed and revised as necessary to meet the concerns of the people. Regardless of what happens with Jellystone. So I, I really, the clock is now ticking and I don't see any reason why the select board can't move forward like it's done.
Well, I think.
Other committees to get concerns in the town together, to start the process of looking into. I'm gonna improve and fix the issues that Chip talked about with inconsistencies in ordinance and so.
All right. No, that, that, yeah, no, thanks. I think. I mean, at this point, to answer your question directly, the, the board has not had a, a board meeting discussion on that question directly. Right? We have, open, we, we, with the moratorium is passed, but no, we have not formally discussed it. I think that, um. I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, I mean, I would think that we would start to communicate with the planning board and. Get a sense of any, what direction they're taking, because I must, I believe it's their obligation. Spear had this being a land, a land ordinance. Land use ordinance.
Do we need to give them some kind of direction formally to say?
I mean, I.
This?
I think that, I mean, that's a good question. Uh, you know, does the board feel compelled to direct them to, to look into it? Uh, do we want to initiate the discussion on, or at least ask them what they're doing about it first?
I believe we have, but I, I agree. This is the process is for them to.
Right.
Bring forward amendments.
Amy.
Is there, um, an outside source that, that can help write that ordinance so that we can get forward, go forward with this?
Well, I think you bring up a good point, which I, I forget the name of the company.
General Code.
General Code. So what, if that's, is that, was, would that be relatable? Because.
Not at all.
No.
Not at all.
Wouldn't be able to.
You're not gonna get anybody to rewrite ordinances and, and do, do legal stuff for ten thousand dollars. There are competing.
No, I understand. I just, I, I, I'm just, I'm just raising what is, you know, what, what, what directions the town has and I, I, I respect your answer. But I know that general, I, I, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of General Code right now. I'm just raising that they're, they're working on. What I understood to be antagonistic or con- contrarian articles in our ordinance. Whether that is true, let's hope it's true for ten thousand dollars, even if that's not enough. It's still ten thousand dollars.
And, and I think that's true to the, to the extent that what happens is they look for inconsistencies that, that, you know, is, is A here and B there.
And they fix that. They don't make substantive recommendations about what the standard should be. And I, and I didn't bring them forward as being the people that were gonna resolve this situation. I just. It was a point of that. They're looking into it. I was trying to answer a question about an outside organization.
I just didn't know if there was an outside expert or something that, that we could go to that helps and Henry, did you have a?
Well, I don't know about any outside experts, but I heard. A lot of communication from citizens who had grievances with the existing ordinance. And maybe it's time to establish a committee so those people can put in their input. If they have a grievance, find out what it is and what they suggest you do about it.
And it is, it is up to us to, to appoint committee.
I think, I think that's a. I, I think that's a good idea.
So should we do it the same way we did the last set?
Ask qualifications and.
Yeah.
Do committee, yeah, that's our process.
And you might wanna have, you, you might wanna have, you know, I don't know. That you're gonna do very well. With the committee of thirty-five angry people.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so you, you might wanna think about, uh, limits on it and also letting people put in written comments.
Of course, sure. That's it.
Uh, I, you know. Throughout the last few years, things that someone hasn't brought up about Campground ordinance. That regardless of that, Campground ordinance needs to be updated and revised when we come to the select board, the planning board. We get bumped back, we get bumped over here, we get bumped over there and hence that's why the citizens initiative came about. So it, the time is ticking. And we still don't have the answers. How is this gonna work? You know, we do need a committee of some people that, that at least can start to move it forward and start to talk about. What are some of those updates that we, we want to, you know, that, that can be recommended, revisions? So we're coming, you know, we need guidance system.
Sure. Yes.
Last, last comment, and I just want to be real clear. I wasn't trying to put the onus on you guys in terms of you've gotta fix this problem. I actually just from recent experience saw what I thought worked really well. Which was, there's an issue, let's get interested people to, who are willing to, to, to give their time and talent. Form a committee, let them do their work. They can bring forward solutions. They can ask for help if they need it. So I was just suggesting for asking that, that you take, that you take that step. That's all.
Understood. Yeah. I, no, I think those are, I think those are good suggestions.
Well, then, can, can we use the same process that we use for the other committees?
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and get some folks.
Advertise.
Advertising and have applications.
But I think, I, I agree with Henry completely. This is. For writing something, you really need about maybe four people. You really. Anytime you get past that, you're gonna wind up in trouble.
We should ask what, what the, what the, well, what the board is already doing, what the planning board is already doing.
That's right.
I understand that they, but I don't know.
I, I think that we can do that as a board, but I think, I don't think that that would, uh. Supersede this option. I think that can happen simultaneously.
I'd really like to know what, if the planning board's already got a process, I don't wanna step on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or at least we should be working with.
We should be working with them instead of, instead of throwing something else on top.
Okay. Again, I think you can ask Bryce, but I think Bryce spoke pretty clear that nothing is happening on the planning board because. There, there appear to be some questions that have been raised about precise scope of the moratorium. So.
I think.
And that's a separate question that you don't.
Those are two separate issues, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think to the point though, if we could to, to these. We could draft the charge that, um. Points that, uh, uh. Times it now. I'm just kidding, I lost my words. Points to, uh. This, uh, authorizes, that's too strong, but tell, tells the, tells the committee to work with planning board.
Yeah, right.
You know, in that charge, right? Is that possible?
I just wanna be sure that they haven't already started.
Want me to, want me to work on something? I'll, I'll work on something.
I think you wanna have a planning board involved in it and you also want to have Chip involved.
Right.
They should be, uh, 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 a resource and an accessory. It would be great if the chairman of the planning board said. Here's a guy from a planning board that we want to be on this committee to, to, to steer.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, that is their, they, they need to.
Right.
They, they need to do it, but I also think it needs to have people to have the ideas, my thing, of maybe. You know, people have ideas on what things to be made from.
And it should be a, a limited number of people as well.
Hazel.
I, yeah.
So my suggestion was gonna be, yes, limit the number of people. The process you used last time was to take. Any applications and then I think you were uncomfortable saying, wow, this person's not qualified. You didn't really wanna like pick anybody out.
Mm-hmm.
But I think if you're gonna go into this and you wanna have a small committee, five to seven people on a team is usually the effective number. Maybe you could set up the criteria, um, and find people that meets, meet a certain profile. I don't know, I'm gonna make this up. Maybe you need somebody who's a lawyer and somebody from the planning board who can facilitate and somebody who understands. Co, you know, subject matter expertise, somebody from the, from the. General public who maybe would solicit input from the folks that have got, you know, the thirty-nine angry people or whatever it is, but. I think if you put some criteria up, when you look at those applications coming in, kinda like a job description, because, oh yeah, these people meet, uh. Requirements and then that way maybe there's less of a feeling because people, not everybody may be selected for that committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, quite that amount. That number of people who were interested.
Well, I was making.
So what they.
You know, you, you get.
Yeah, right. We have a, it'd be a lot more people and we just can't take everybody on this one.
Right, and we're not looking for sentiment, we're looking for language. So we need a fairly small number of people, I agree.
Right, and I'm saying just maybe you can put some sort of profiles, uh.
That makes sense.
The characteristics of the people that would be best suited and qualified to be, to be on that committee.
Yes. So you're gonna, you're gonna, Lloyd's gonna draft something?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
I'll go too. We're gonna be gone, uh, next week later, the week I get to before I go.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, we'll draft that and then I, I can, um. I, I, I can reach out and talk to Andrew. And, you know, get a sense, so. And then we can. Kind of weigh that into what this.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So what are you talking about?
Do you request for.
The charge for a committee.
People who will, and work on a committee.
And then to also answer the planning board question, I volunteered to, uh. I'll, I'll reach out to Andrew Paul.
So, yeah, we're moving toward executive session.
Yes. Yes, uh, Ken. No.
I say no.
Yeah. Yeah, of course.
Oh, question, I have a question about the status of the. Potential warrant article, uh, town manager.
Yes, good question.
We decided to, uh, accept the recommendation of the committee and put an article. Um, asking the town to, uh, approve the state town manager ordinance.
Thank you, man. I.
Right, right, that's, that's, right. That was the recommendation. That was what we did. That was, that was what we did, decided to do.
Yep. Uh, any other public, public comments tonight? Okay, hey, thank you all.
Okay.